Call of the order, welcome to council. Welcome citizens to Norristown to council meeting Wednesday, November 7th. Please stand along the side to pledge allegiance to the citizens of the county.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the people of this nation, and to God.
Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call please?
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Alice Carter-Foukour. Hakeem Jones.
Aye.
Heather Lewis.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Senator Sanders.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes, or workshop minutes, from 10:16 to 2018.
Number 3.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Today we had an executive session in regards to real estate matters and litigation matters. And next up, we'll do presentations on proclamation honoring the heroism of Sergeant Mark Hooser. You, 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 sir. Is he here? Hopefully everyone can hear me. Alright, this is our proclamation to honor and commemorate the heroism of Sergeant Mark Hooser. Sergeant Mark Hooser. Hazard. Hazard. I'm dedicated member of the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department. Demonstrated his heroism and commitment to ensure the welfare of all who call Montgomery County home when he saved the life of a one-year-old child in Norristown on May 15th, 2018. And Sergeant Hooser and his partner responded to a call of a child choking in the vicinity of Noble and West Area Streets in Norristown. Upon arrival, Sergeant Hooser applied the homelink maneuver on the choking infant. In the heroic efforts and prompt initiative of Sergeant Hooser, saved the life of that infant who would have otherwise perished. And the actions of Sergeant Hooser went above and beyond the call of duty, displaying the ability to fulfill the diverse and numerous expectations of a county sheriff and his tremendous asset to the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department and the municipality of Norristown. The municipal council of Norristown joins the community as it honors, commemorates, and offers its gratitude to you, proclaimed this day, November 7th, 2018. Thank you, sir. This proclamation will be done with Sandra Manrique. Is she here? Small Business Saturday proclamation. Are they here? Still recognize them. Alright, cool. Alright, we'll do Sandra first. Sandra Manrique, a graduate of the Norristown Area School District and current undergraduate at Cabrini University, has been selected as recipient of the Dr. Jose Castillo Scholarship. And Ms. Manrique is the first Norristown recipient of the Dr. Jose Castillo Scholarship, which is awarded to undergraduate students of Mexican descent who submitted essays of exceptional quality and substance. And Ms. Manrique received the scholarship by the hands of the Pennsylvania Secretary of Education, Pedro Rivera, and the General Counsel of Mexico, Dr. Alicia Keever, at the Mexican Independence Day celebration at Penn's Landing in Philadelphia on September 16th, 2018. Through her dedication to academic excellence and pride in her Mexican heritage, Ms. Manrique serves as an explanatory example of the tremendous potential of the local youth of Norristown. And the Norristown Council of Norristown honors Sandra Manrique and celebrates the outstanding character, leadership, and accomplishments she has gained through her academic career as the first Norristown recipient of the Dr. Jose Castillo Scholarship proclaimed November 7th, 2018. And then we have one for to recognize the Small Business Saturday. The government of the municipality of Norristown, Pennsylvania celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Association, there are currently 32.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. Small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and on average roughly, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done in small, independently-owned businesses. And about 90% of US consumers are aware of Small Business Saturday and firmly believe that supporting small, independently-owned businesses have a positive impact on their community. The municipality of Norristown, Pennsylvania supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. The Municipal Council of Norristown recognizes and promotes local businesses and do hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday in the municipality of Norristown, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year proclaimed November 7th, 2008. Are there any announcements? Yes, Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you, Vice President. I don't really have an announcement for you, I do have my comment. I just want to thank the voters of Norristown for coming out in what was a really, really, dreary, awful wet weather day and expressing those voice at the polls. It almost set short numbers for midterm election. I think it's very impressive that everybody came out and spoke so eloquently, I guess, don't like the word, coming out in polls. Especially to the, a lot of first-time voters that we have, many of them were 18-years-old and this was their first time voting, and many of them were very, very excited to be able to do this and have, be able to perform their civic duty. So thanks again to the voters of Norristown for coming out in great numbers in the midterm election.
Any other announcements?
Derek.
I'm sorry.
I too just had a comment. I want to thank Chief Talbot and the Norristown Police Force for the awesome and entertaining softball game that was on Sunday. It was a great turnout on both the community and our police department, and it was just a really enjoyable time. And I just want to thank all of the officers and Chief Talbot and the Carver Center for coordinating it, and it was just a really good community event, and we look forward to it growing and getting Chief Talbot out there and some baseball fans and, and Matt Bradford is an awesome softball player, I didn't know that, and has some really good athletes, so it was a really good time, so maybe Chief has seen looking at the ceiling, O'Donnell, and the fire department next year, because it was a lot of them, so, thank you.
Just shocked, never, I did play.
Good evening, I just wanted to share a grand opening this Saturday. You may be aware of the DTLR Steersville, which is formerly Villas Steers, they moved from West Marshall Street down to 221 East Main Street. They will be adding their grand opening this Saturday, November 10th, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. If you notice, the area is starting to become vibrant, starting to get cleaned up, and it's a new addition to our downtown, so Saturday, November 10th, 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Are there any public comments, Madam Secretary? Is there any communication? Thank you. The appointment of the firefighter, Chief O'Donnell.
I'm ready whenever you are, but you have to go through a resolution and approve it first.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is Resolution 18-157, 2018, it's a resolution for the hiring of a new firefighter. Whereas the municipal council is desirous of keeping Norristown safe and secure, and whereas the municipal council offered employment to Michael R. Hunzicker, who has accepted the offer, and whereas Michael R. Hunzicker has not successfully completed all phases of civil service testing, now therefore be resolved that Michael R. Hunzicker is appointed to the Norristown Fire Department by the Municipal Council of the Municipality of Norristown and enacted its follows. And certainly that resolution will be in place upon a motion and a vote of the Municipal Council at this time, swearing in.
Are there any questions? Can we, can council consider Resolution 18-157 to appoint firefighter, hire, I know additional, I'm sorry, an additional firefighter is authorized and approved 2018 in the so-called budget?
Second.
Somebody have a roll call please?
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Hakeem Jones.
Aye.
Heather Lewis.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion approved. I'm sorry, but I need to go back to the announcements because I had the announcements in front of me.
I'm Michael Hunzicker.
I'm Michael Hunzicker.
To solemnly swear or affirm that I will support.
To solemnly swear and affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home rule charter of the municipality of Norristown.
The Home rule charter of the municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As firefighter for the municipality of Norristown.
As firefighter for the municipality of Norristown.
With honor.
With honor.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the laws.
And enforce the laws.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religion.
Religion.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
Natural origin.
Natural origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Derek.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to the announcements, because I have them in front of me. So we had Seven Days of Christmas, which is sponsored by the Norristown Police Department. They are looking for donations that will go to seven Norristown families in need. Contact Lieutenant Fisher for details at 610-292-8283. The Norristown Fire Department has partnered with Plymouth Family Land for the ninth annual Operation Toy Drive, collection boxes in the lobby of the municipality until December 15th. The Fire Department is also hosting the Thanksgiving Turkey Drive, Turkey Dinner for the fourth year for the families in need. More information can be found by contacting Chief O'Donnell at 610-292-8281. And then we have, Norristown Recreation is now offering winter youth basketball and soccer. Registration is now open, and you can go to www.norristown.org for more details, or email recreation@norristown.org. Missful woman, Mr. President. We have the assessment appeal settlement between Norristown Area School District and current territory.
Thank you. Council, I would ask that council at this point consider in this section of the agenda, opening the agenda to discuss some additional items related to this, this particular slate of agenda items, and certainly as part of all the community who had opportunity to come in on those items that this will be agenda.
So we have a motion to open up the agenda.
Yes.
The agenda to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
And just so council is clear, this is actually a motion to open up the agenda to add two items for consideration. Both the consideration of this proposed settlement agreement for a property assessment appeal, as well as a, a request by the Elmwood Park 2, which is for Resolution 18-158 relating to invasive species removal on Harding Boulevard. Hopefully that does not change anybody's vote, I don't think it does, I just want to make sure that it's clear. So, Mr. Administrator, if I may take over for the assessment appeal matter, sir. So before your, before your days tonight, is a proposed settlement agreement that was prepared by the Norristown Area School District for an assessment appeal that was actually brought on the Norristown Area School District against a property that's located at, what, 1011 New Oak Street. This is an appeal that was brought on the school district, arguing or alleging that the assessment appeal, that the assessment at New Oak Street is currently too low, is therefore seeking to increase the assessment. The school has negotiated a settlement in which the assessment will be increased. The settlement covers tax years 2014 through present of 2019. Again, a copy of the stipulation has been provided to council, copy is also available to the public in the front. I would ask at this time if there would be a motion with regard to the proposed, or let me start by saying, are there any questions by any council members with regard to this proposed settlement? For what it's worth, it's already been approved by the school district, by the county, by the court of assessment, as well as by the taxpayer itself. If there are no questions by council members, would there any be, are there any questions by members of the public? Were there any comments by members of the public? Mr. Vice President, having asked council, having asked public as well, are there any questions or comments, and seeing none, I would ask at this time if there would be a motion with regard to this pending settlement.
We have a motion to approve the stipulations and order of settlement prepared by the Norristown Area School District for Docket Number 2013-30693, which is a primary tax assessment appeal for property located at 1011 New Oak Street.
Second.
We have a roll call please.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Hakeem Jones.
Aye.
Heather Lewis.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye. The ayes have it, motion is approved. You want to take us into B?
I would be happy to, if that's alright, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice President, the addition, the second additional item to the agenda tonight is a request by the Norristown Zoological Society, also referred to as the Elmwood Park Zoo, to perform invasive species removal and related land management activities on a portion of Harding Boulevard. Before you tonight is a proposed resolution, Resolution 18-158 of 2018. Before I read it, and, like I said, maybe I don't even need to read it, I believe Mr. Cullen, who is the attorney representing the Zoological Society, is here tonight. If Mr. Cullen could come up to the podium. So council is aware, the, the zoo had made a request in order to basically enter into existing property that belongs to the municipality, it's a wooded land, or woodland area, along Harding Boulevard adjacent to an area currently used by the zoo, and they'd like to perform some land management activities within that area, meaning they'd like to remove some invasive species, as well as some dead, dying, and decayed trees in that area. In order to do this, they would obviously need approval from council in order to enter your property and perform these sorts of activities. Therefore, they made this request, so perhaps, Mr. Cullen, if you could maybe briefly describe to council what it is, the nature of what is you're asking to do.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Council, Mr. Jones, chief, it's nice seeing y'all, and thank you for seeing us on such short notice. The project which we are seeking to get permission for is to remove the invasive species that have unfortunately and through the fault of absolutely nobody overtaken the hill that exists between the existing ballfields and Harding Boulevard. I have with me John Neistad from Eustis Engineering, who is an expert in the area, and with your permission, after I'm done, he would speak to you just briefly as the expert in the area as to how that would be performed. That area has been so overly run by ash borer vines and invasive species that what it has done is effectively destroyed all of the good hardwood specimens that made that originally a preservable forest. We have identified some species of hardwoods and species that you would want to preserve that exist, and if we don't begin the process of at least protecting them, that invasion will continue, and we potentially would lose forever those species without intervention. So what we have proposed is, with your permission, is to go onto the property, to remove certainly dead and dying trees, there's a substantial amount of dead trees that are actually just laying there, there's a substantial amount of what appears to be trees, but from my understanding, is very much like a cotton candy. There's a stick left up the middle, and then invasive vines have enveloped around the entire top, so as you drive by, yes, it's nice and green at the top, but there's really nothing underneath, it's completely dead. So we're seeking your permission to go in and do that. We are certainly not seeking to circumvent the land development process. When we are ready, we'll submit full applications in accordance with the law to all the necessary agencies, and we do want to assure you that no hardwood species, anything of value, we would be at this point taking care of. In fact, John has offered to go in and actually identify those species that may still be alive but yet are not of value, invasive in nature, and we also are asking for this opportunity because we can take advantage of the weather at this point, as opposed to waiting to the, to the wintertime or in the spring, when the process of regrowth would begin. So with your permission, I'd just ask John Neistad to step up. John, reintroduce yourself to council, I know you've spoken to them before. Just briefly tell them your, your CV and then...
Sure. John Neistad, a landscape architect, and I've been doing environmental restoration as a landscape architect for about 20 years, including woodland management, stream restoration, those type of activities.
And John, you've been through this process with us, correct?
Yes.
And you in fact helped design what we're asking for here today, correct?
That's right.
And we've, certainly it's not a land development project?
No, this is a restoration management project.
Can you explain that to council, please?
Sure. A first step before restoring a site is to manage the invasive species, and it takes a few years to do that. And step one would be to take down some of the species, especially that can spread, and there are a lot of invasive vines going up on the trees. So as a process, I personally will go out there and identify the native trees that will remain, and those would be the healthy ones, even half-healthy native trees, they should remain, so I'll identify those, and I welcome anyone to come out and check, and what we're going to do is start removing invasive species and some of the dead trees, and then a little bit closer to the high-quality woodlands, closer to the zoo, we'll, we'll be even more careful and make sure that it's very selective what we take out there. So we'll be taking down, it's mostly ash trees that are there that are dead, covered with vines, and it's a large area, and my estimation at the moment is, is that it's about 90% of ash trees in that area. So I, I expect that there will be about 10% good trees left in there, and then as it gets closer to the higher-quality woodlands, then most of that, that's about 90% beautiful native trees on, over on the slope next to the zoo, and we'll be protecting those. Now, what's nice about doing it this time of year is we can get in there a little bit easier when there's less vegetation, and also for some species, such as the tree of heaven or the Norway maple, it's the time of year when we cut the stump. We, by the way, we won't be cutting any of the species below grade, we're not ripping out roots, we cut them, and then they get painted with an herbicide that'll work their way into the roots. So it's a very good time of year, it takes the herbicide down into the plant.
And council, with your permission, we certainly understand that the economics would be borne by the Elmwood Park Zoo, that we certainly would sign any necessary releases, believing the municipality of any liability on this issue, and agreeing, of course, to do a full land development study. So we're not trying to circumvent anything, we're trying to take advantage of the time and the location to protect what we have during this time of the year.
Mr. Cullen, I believe in your letter that you had submitted, you'd also identified that this plan has been reviewed by the county, is that correct?
It has, and I've included in a packet that I dropped off, Lee Stoyak from the county had signed off on that, and we had presented that to them.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Vice President, might be a good opportunity for other council members to ask if they have any questions of Mr. Cullen or of the zoo.
Any questions? Councilwoman Brady.
Would they possibly have, would they possibly have any value to local carpenters or woodworkers to be used in any projects, and if so, is there a method, that those people could obtain some of this wood?
That's a great consideration. We can ask that, that be considered. I've brought this up with Al Zone before, and they had saved some trees from a previous work. It's just a very big operation for people to come in and take it, and it's saved, you need heavy equipment, it tends not to get used. We would like to save a little bit for some specialty items, and so Al Zone has said yes to that. As far as the public coming in, it's a great idea, and it'd be worth considering, and I could certainly take that to the zoo in that regard.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm not familiar with ash trees, and, and so you said 90% of the ash trees will be removed. What percentage of the entire project will be removed, you know, including those ash trees, so that plot of land, what percentage is going to be removed?
I should restate that. There is a, a large area there, and as you look at it, say, from this area here in about 10 times the length of this room, it's mostly ash trees, it's about 90% ash trees. They're, they have been devastated by the Emerald Ash Borer, so it's not that we're going to take out 90%. take out 90%. They're all dying and dead anyway. We'll take out all the ash. What would be left is about, in that area, is about 10% native, but as we get closer to the high-quality woodland, almost every tree there is a native, maybe one out of 10 isn't. So we'll be much more careful as we get closer. So does that answer the question?
Yes, and it also leads me to, I guess, my second question. Is there a plot plan or some landscaping plan that we, as a visual? Because I don't know what a tree of heaven, I don't know what a ash tree looks like. So these, you know, trees are foreign to me, so I wouldn't be able to, you know, just take this list of trees and be like, okay, well, yeah, they tore that down. So is there a map that will show that area with, you know, shaded area of like, okay, these are where the ash trees are, this is what's going to be removed, this is what's going to be left, and you know what I mean? Is there a visual aid for us?
Not specifically, but I could describe the visual aid that you've been given already as part of your packet, and this is a color version of it. So I brought enough to hand out, I think I brought 10 of these.
Does that reflect the trees that will be removed?
It should.
Or just the area that you'll be working in?
The area that we'll be working in, and it describes, I can describe to you, in this zone one, I anticipate about 80 to 90% of the trees. I won't know till I get in there. It's hard to get in there, and it's starting to open up, but looking at how much is dead, I would think in zone one approximately 80 to 90% of those trees would come out. In other words, 100% of the ash trees and invasive species. So with this map, I can give representations of what I anticipate is coming up, but we haven't been able to get in. It's too thick to actually do surveying of individual trees.
Okay, and I ask only for your protection and ours, so it doesn't appear as though there's being land renovation or remediation versus you're actually doing the work that you say you're doing. Because if it's a significant amount, then they can easily be mistaken as, oh, well, you guys are doing, you know, removing all this stuff in advance. So if you could provide something like that for us so that we can kind of follow along in the process with you, that would be helpful.
Good. And so we'll work together on what that is. We can work with that. It is so thick, it's actually difficult to get physically in there, but as they open it up, everything becomes clearer, and John was talking about identifying specifically the good and the bad trees for a visible view.
Mr. Cullen, as actually a follow-up to the councilwoman's question, first, did you have an opportunity to see the draft resolution that was?
I did, thank you.
Okay. As a part of the draft resolution, you saw as one of the conditions being proposed would be that you'd have to enter into some sort of written agreement about the indemnity and liability and insurance issues?
Yes, sir.
Would you be opposed if as a part of that agreement, there also be a condition that maybe somebody from Public Works or another official from the municipality just go out with your engineer to make sure that you're not, not that we think that you would be, but just to make sure you're not unnecessarily removing trees, or that really what you're removing are in fact dead, dying species or invasive species, and you're doing your best to preserve, you know, just so we have some comfort that...
Yes, sir. We'd have no objection to that being added, and John had actually offered to me as we sat outside waiting our turn to do that.
Okay, yeah. I don't know if that addresses the councilwoman's concerns, but at least that might help to mitigate the issue of maybe unnecessarily removing trees.
You can do mine, Rebecca.
So forgive me if this is a silly question. I'm not an expert on trees or herbicides, but the herbicide that you're planning to use on the dead and dying trees, is it safe to use around the good, healthy trees? And we've been getting a lot of rain, so you spray the herbicide, is there any chance that it gets caught in rain runoff and causes unintended effects that we don't really want?
So I'll restate what we would use the herbicide on. It would just be a small portion of the trees. The dead and dying trees, we don't have to use it on, so it would only be on the invasive species that tend to respout. So that would be Norway maple, elanthus, and then there's tree of heaven there. So it gets cut, and then the herbicide is only put on the trunk, and then it just goes down to the roots, and we would use an herbicide that does not poison the soil. So it only goes into the roots of that species, and when it touches soil, then it goes inert, and it doesn't kill anything else.
Thank you.
Sure. Great question.
If there are no other questions by any council members, it might be a good opportunity if there are any members of the public have any questions.
Any questions from the public?
I'm gone, so where are these trees? I can hear them, I can hear you, but I didn't understand where are these?
So the area that you're looking to do this land management work, where is it in relation to the current zoo parking area? That might be helpful to maybe explain where you're talking about. And there's a map, if you want to come up and see what map he has, too.
Is it near Penn Dot?
So there's an, I'll start where everyone knows. There's an entry drive to the zoo, and if you look to the right, that's the best woods right there. And then farther up the top of the hill, it starts to transition toward the worse type of woodland up there. So I'll describe it another way. Come out of the zoo, take a left, drive down Harding Boulevard, it loops around toward West Johnson Highway. So right at that point on the left-hand side is where this dying woodland is.
So like where Penn Dot is at? Where the Penn Dot building?
Penn Dot will be up on the hills, continuing, yes.
And you go down that hill?
Yes.
Down and around the bend?
Yeah.
Where Penn Dot is?
I traditionally say it's the land between the zoo, the ball fields, and the top of Harding Boulevard.
Yeah.
And vice chair, I did show Ms. Stark the actual property. I took it over to her.
Okay.
Any other questions from the public? Go ahead, sir.
How would this affect the state of treatment as far as runoff goes into the curve?
As our total plan goes, we'll actually show less water infiltration coming down that hill. With all that dead vegetation, there's nothing stopping water coming down now. As part of this long-term project, and the swales that John and Eustace Engineering has designed, potentially there'll be less runoff than you actually have now naturally, because we'll be retaining it on-site.
Are you going to be retaining, you know, clearing the property of all the trees that are absorbed in the water without putting any other growth in that area to maintain the water level?
Yeah, those trees are all dead, so what John's going to design, what they have designed, are a number of retention bases. Maybe you could describe it to the chairman.
Sure, and that's the future project, so I see what you're saying, this needs to stand on its own, not having additional runoff.
Do you have a model here in comparison to where they're kind of planting grass or any kind of, in that area to absorb the water? It's still going to be runoff down there.
The existing ground cover that's there will stay.
And let me interject there, and I think this is maybe a good opportunity to clarify, again, to reiterate, you're here before to ask permission to go in and do land management work within a municipal wooded area. You're not asking to perform any development. So the stormwater things you're discussing, they're not in the table, they're not on the table right now. They're not before this council. You're just asking essentially to do what normally this council might have to direct its Public Works to go out and do, which would be to go out and to clean up municipal-owned property. So that's all you're doing, is you're just basically asking permission to be able to expend your funds to go out and do this type of land management work on the property. You're not asking to do anything more than that, correct? So really, you're not changing the stormwater, you're not changing the grade, you're not changing anything. The stormwater is going to continue however it currently is, as exists on the property today.
That's correct. So we're not doing...
Councilwoman Lewis?
Yeah, and thank you, sir, for that question, because I think now that we're raising, so that is some questions, and Mr. Solicitor, they are asking to specifically just remove the dead and dying trees, but that is going to leave a gap. And so that gap that's left, I think, is what the question is. How is that gap going to affect the stormwater runoff, and how are you going to prevent it from being, I guess, worse than what it was prior to removal of those dead and dying trees? I guess is the question.
Yeah, the dead and dying trees themselves are not contributing to improve stormwater management.
Not a dead and dying tree.
An invasive tree technically does help stormwater. So when we cut that, we're trying to save the piece of woodland that's good by cutting the invasive, so eventually it's managing stormwater correctly by saving the good woodlands. An invasive species does help stormwater a little bit, but we think that caring about the good piece of woodlands justifies cutting some of the invasive species, which could spread into the woodlands, which we really care about. There is actually going to be no land clearing. I want to be clear of that. It's cutting some dead trees, dying trees, and some invasive species, which is par for the course in woodland management. So I do understand what you're saying, there might be a minuscule effect, but this is a standard process in land management for invasive species. People usually don't mind an invasive species being cut. Yeah, I would speak as a professional with years of experience, that cutting the amount of invasive species that we're talking about there, the trees, would not have an effect, a negative effect on the tree. That's an opinion. It'll be vegetation, we're leaving the vegetation that's there, the ground layer. Yeah, we can agree to put down some seed mix, because it's a great question, that if there is, if there does happen to be a little bit of soil disturbance which may be accidental, then yes, we could absolutely seed it. That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Ms. Stark?
If you listen to them, if you press, they'll be done.
Well, I have a comment, and, you know, listening to everything, I'm not sure that I... I think that we should probably hire our own thorough party, along with our engineer and our Public Works person, to really go over this with you guys. Not saying I'll take your word for it, but I would rather be safe than sorry at a later date, especially with the public talking and saying, you know, about the stormwater and everything like that. So would everyone feel comfortable with us directing staff to get with the zoo, to go over more details, and maybe hire someone who's an expert in plants and so forth to go with the zoo, and along with Thomas and Cal to talk more about it?
Mr. Vice President, you're proposing a motion to table this, to allow staff to review with the zoo, and then bring it back to council?
If council would, yes, if council would want to do that. I would feel more comfortable doing it that way, but it's up to you guys.
Counsel, as maybe certainly in line with Councilmember Perry's suggestion, and I know there is the desire not to slow the process down, we certainly can have our municipal engineering team work collaboratively with them, and if council can give approval pending a satisfactory report from the municipal engineer, that they've done their necessary due diligence in terms of water runoff, in terms of the trees that are being cleared, that way administratively, we can work along with him, and as soon as he gives a signed letter to his satisfaction and the expert's satisfaction, they can be, they can get the work started, and then we can issue that report to council.
Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I always want to say that, considering that they are sort of in a crunch position because of the weather considerations, that we make this motion contingent on the meeting and the agreement between those parties.
Okay. Any other? Councilwoman Lewis?
And I'm comfortable with our Public Works Director engaging in that process if we don't need to hire or incur any extra cost with the engineer, if Mr. Odenibo is so inclined.
And then, Councilman Jones?
I agree with you guys on counsel. I am in support of the zoo society working on the project, which will help the municipality as a whole. If we can expedite it, working alongside the municipality, Public Works Department, I'm in support of you guys, you know, making that area one safer and better suited for not just the zoo, but also for the municipality.
Can I have a motion for Resolution 18-158 of the invasive species removal of Harding Boulevard, approving a resolution pending more information and agreement with the municipality, authorizing the Norristown Zoological Society Elmwood Park Zoo to perform invasive species removal and related land management activities on a portion of Harding Boulevard? Roll call, please.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Hakeem Jones.
Aye.
Heather Lewis.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 18-158 passes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Cullen, we'll be in touch then, probably tomorrow, in order to schedule a time for Public Works to meet, to discuss the concerns that were addressed here today.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Mr. Jones? Item C.
Item C is memorandum of understanding between the Elmwood Park Zoo, the municipality, and the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. This is a request of council to consider approving this memorandum of understanding between the parties, as the parties have agreed upon regarding the potential future redevelopment of the land containing softball fields and dedicated open space that is currently conserved via deep restrictions in Elmwood Park. This is essentially a memorandum of understanding that relates to a discussion that began a year or so ago, where, excuse me, where there was some interest by the zoo in using the existing ball fields as this parking lot expansion. That deal ultimately did not go through, which has resulted in the earlier conversation we just finished as an alternative site. While we were going through that process, the issue became, what would happen should council at some point consider the actual use of the ballparks for future expansion, considering the fact that the municipality had received almost $1 million in grant money from the county and $200,000 in grant money from the state for the development of those ball fields? It was important to the municipality and the council particularly, that the municipality, if that decision were ever made by council, that municipality would be made whole for those grant funds. That discussion ensued, and as a part of that discussion, it was determined how the management of those grant funds would be handled. Because the county was the awardee of the $960,000-plus portion of the grant funds, should the decision be made to utilize those fields, then the zoo would be... be made to utilize those fields, then the zoo would be responsible for reimbursing the municipality for that $960,000. That money, because it was awarded by the county, would be given to the county to be held on behalf of the municipality pending the submission of approved open space projects that are in Norristown, in Norristown only. The $200,000 that would be given, that was given directly to Norristown by the state, would then be given directly to Norristown, under the stipulations that that $200,000 would be used for similar open space projects in Norristown, in Norristown only. So this agreement is really a cement of that arrangement and clarifies that arrangement, so that at whatever time, should a council make a decision to utilize those fields for parking, that all parties have already agreed how that would happen, because that would need to be in place in terms of making a transaction happen before the Orphans Court in Montgomery County, in order for the transaction to be approved. And this stipulates how that would work, and that is why this memorandum of understanding is before council for consideration.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All right, no questions, okay. Can we have a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between Montgomery County, the municipality of Norristown, and Elmwood Park Zoo that reaffirms the commitment of all three parties have agreed upon regarding the development of parking facilities on land containing softball fields and dedicated open space that is currently conserved via deed restriction in Elmwood Park? Can we have roll call, please?
Olivia Brady, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Derek Perry.
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Chief Talbot, Public Safety Police.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm requesting that council consider a motion to approve Resolution 18-156 regarding the designation of three disabled parking spaces. The locations are 135 West Elm, 604 East Marshall, 1600 Locust Street. The residents at each location have demonstrated a physical limitation, making these accommodations necessary. I'm also asking that council consider removing spaces that are no longer needed at 38 Hart Ramp Avenue, 54 West Basin, 120 West Elm, and 237 East Marshall Street.
Thank you. Any questions? Can council, can we consider, can we have a motion to consider Resolution 18-156, which will establish disabled parking spaces in the municipality?
Second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Olivia Brady, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Derek Perry.
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. I'm also requesting that council consider advertising ordinance 18-07 of 2018. The purpose of this ordinance is to designate space for police vehicle-only parking on the north side of East Marshall Street. The location is from a point 20 feet east of Willow Street to a point 60 feet east of Willow Street. This change is to improve safety of the public and police as officers are taking prisoners in and out of the courthouse. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. Can we have a motion for council to consider authorizing the advertisement of proposed ordinance 18-07, which amends the parking restrictions on the north side of East Marshall Street from a point 20 feet east of Willow Street to a point 60 feet east of Willow Street? Madam Secretary, can we have roll call?
Olivia Brady, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Derek Perry.
Aye. The ayes have it. An advertisement of ordinance 18-07 is approved. Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, for council approval or disapproval of the certificates of appropriateness for properties that applied for and have been reviewed by Norristown's Historical Architectural Review Board in October 2018, 216 East Marshall Street and 325 East Moore Street.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Okay. Can we have a motion for council? Whoops, sorry. Councilwoman Lewis.
Paybacks, I understand. It's okay. Can you just give a brief description of what's being done at those properties, please?
Yes. 216 Marshall Street, there's four items that were approved as submitted with the following modifications and clarifications. The existing vinyl siding may be replaced with new vinyl siding overlapped as submitted. The existing metal and vinyl replacement windows may be replaced with one over one double-hung vinyl replacement windows. The existing capping over the window and decorative trim may be replaced with new capping. New basement windows may be installed. Windows shall be inward-acting hopper-type, not sliding-type windows. For 325 East Moore Street, approved as submitted with the following modifications and or clarifications, the applicant may replace the upper main and front dormer metal roof with asphalt shingles. Shall install an aluminum K gutter and downspout matching the gutter materials at the neighboring, as the neighboring property at 327 East Moore Street. The applicant shall uncover the existing transom above the front door and install glass to match an transom as located at 323 East Moore Street.
Any other questions? Thank you. Can we have a motion for council to consider approving the October 2018 HAR certificates?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Meeting adjourned.